Yeah, we better stop.
You call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberating justice.
Roll call, all councilors are present. Approval of the agenda. We have the agenda that's presented, are there any changes?
No.
Okay. Counsel, anything? None? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
We have a motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. We have the minutes of the March 5th, 2015 regular meeting. Is there any changes, corrections in the minutes that were presented? If not, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Diane.
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Now is our public open forum. This is where anyone in the audience, if they would like to address the counsel on any issues that we will be talking about later tonight, or if they need any explanation or anything, there's their time that they can talk to the counsel. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the counsel? Anyone that would like to speak to the counsel?
Sure.
Okay.
You guys have a few minutes?
Yes, I do. You were close.
I just want to thank the city for letting us look at putting an addition on to St. Paul's Church over there, and it's really going to help our accessibility for handicap to our worship space, to our offices, and to our chapel that we currently use 24 hours a day, six days a week, that a lot of elderly use. And so I want to thank you for the time for that. I also do believe it will help create a little bit greater sense of beauty in that portion of the city, especially as we look from this intersection, and I could probably rattle on for a long time, I just want you to know I'm grateful for your hearing our case.
Thank you, I'm pretty sure everyone knows, but for the record, I need you to state your name, Annie.
I'm Father Greg Paffel, and I live at 304 Sinclair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the counsel? Anyone else that would like to speak to the counsel? Anyone else that would like to speak to the counsel? Okay, public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings tonight, so with that, we will move on to reports and presentation. Police Department, January and February monthly reports, and the 2014 year end report.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. First apologize for missing the last month's meeting. I think we'll just start with January then, and go from there. So generate some of the numbers, we had 11 false alarms, we had five K-9 assists, we had 23 assists for other agencies, we had two fifth-degree possession of arrest for meth, we had six driving after suspension and revocations, we had 19 matter of information calls, 13 medicals, four accidents, 19 suspicious calls, five thefts, we did 241 verbal warnings, we had five welfare checks, for a total activity of 491. And I think that compared pretty close to December, and pretty comparable to last year also. So, February then, we'll move on. We had some of the numbers, seven alarm calls, we had 12 K-9 assists, we had 20 assists for other agencies, five driving complaints, 12 medicals, seven accidents, 12 suspicious calls, and we had 177 verbal warnings given out, 10 welfare checks, and we had a total of 421 total activity. So again, pretty comparable, the last two, three months have all been pretty much the same. Any questions on any of those?
We didn't get those reports in this agenda, did we?
We got the January.
January one.
Oh, okay.
I think I'll get those to you.
Okay.
Sorry. Your end report then, for 2014. We've had plenty of time to look it over now, it's been in the packet for a couple times, so we'll just go through it pretty quick then. Second page there, looking at some of the numbers when you go down the list, they're all relatively pretty comparable to 2013. If you look, I'll just highlight some of those numbers that are a little different. False alarm calls, we had 101 compared to 86 in 2013. Child custody disputes were way down, you see, we had 28 compared to 73 last year. Harassments were down, intoxicated persons were down, matter of informations was up 260 from 210, so that's a good sign, people are calling in and giving us information, letting us know what's going on. Medical calls are always very comparable, always in the 200s. Motors assist was way up for some reason, we had 50 of those compared to 28. Noise violations you see are way up, we had 60 compared to 37. Lot more records request, 64 compared to 49. And all the rest of the numbers are pretty comparable there. If you have any questions on those, let me know. Next page, driving under the influence, we had 47 DWI arrests compared to 51 in 2013, and 43 in 2012. Of those 47 arrests, 20 were impaired by controlled substance. Next page, you see some of the other traffic violations, some of the bigger ones that we do, they're all pretty comparable, the DAS and the driving after evocation, driving after suspension, no proof of insurance has gone up slightly, and driving with no Minnesota driver's license has gone down, so that's good. Everything else pretty comparable there. Car accidents, down slightly, from 110 to 90. Assisting other agencies, looks like we assisted Stearns County 114 times compared to 84, so that one was up, all the other ones are pretty comparable there. The next page, looking at some of our arrests for possession of drug paraphernalia and small amount of marijuana. You see that we had 42 in 2014, and 46 in 2013, and the other one was 26, small amount and 33, so they're staying pretty similar. And if you look at the controlled substance arrest, that has gone up, and has increasingly gone up since 2012. We had 15 this year, fifth-degree arrest, and 13 in 2013. And the controlled substance, second degree and controlled substance, third degree, about the same there. Next page, some of the bigger crimes, robbery, you see, we went from zero in 2013 to two. And burglaries, we went from 16 in 2013 to 13 in 2014. And thefts went down slightly, from 110 to about 105. Arsons made a big jump from zero to three, three arson calls. Domestic assaults increased dramatically from eight in 2013 to 22 in 2014, and the same with assaults. We had six in 2013, and we had 11 in 2014. Sexual assaults, we had three in 2013, and we had four in 2014. Calls for service on the next page. You see calls per hour, basically the peak hours are from 2:00 PM to approximately 11:00 PM. As you see, the peaks, and they're pretty much the same in 2013. Calls by month, this year, or 2014, it was in May, and then June in 2013. And calls per day, you see that Friday and Saturdays are the two main call days. Next page, forfeitures. 2014 South Center Police Department retained $9,294.27 in forfeiture funds, which came from 13 vehicles sold, five cash seizures, 11 of those were results of drugs, three were DWIs, and two were fleeing. Next page, you see in November, we had 11 years of dedicated service by Police Chaplain Ron Hemsworth, who left our department, so we wish him well then, and also in November, we received our, started our K-9 program. And of course, we had shop with a cop, that happened in December, which was a pretty good Last page, I don't know if you want me to read through that, or if you've read it?
We've pretty much read it, but you'd be at the high points of basically what your letter says.
Yep, yep. So, like I say, the last paragraph there, I'd like to read that maybe for the public. South Center Police Department has had, has 90 years of combined experience with our six full-time employees and data entry records person. For a department of this size, having this many years shows that the officers have a great loyalty, dedication, and commitment to the department. Having a low turnover rate for officers helps the community to get to know the officers and establish trust in their abilities when working with them. The Police Department continues to be proactive in enforcement and working with the community, which gives the citizens of South Center a safer community to live, work, and raise a family. So, again, I want to first thank my officers and the job that they do out there, they, a lot of hard hours put in, you know, the rotating shift is taxing on them and their families, so I appreciate all the time they put in. And also want to thank the administrator here and the city staff who are great support too, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
I just, had one, just out of curiosity, the arson, what types of arson is that?
They were, I think we had a couple in school, if I remember correctly, nothing major, they're just small, little.
They weren't fire arson, or anything?
No, just small, but they get categories as arson, so that's what makes their jump go up from zero to three, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else have any questions? I've got one. Brian?
Yeah.
On the assists for other agencies, there was a jump with the county?
Yep.
Is that something that, you know, are we assisting them on doing stuff, or is it where we're actually going on the call because they don't have the coverage out here?
Usually it's going to assist and getting there first, it's probably, we've had more priority calls, or it's more serious calls that they've asked us to respond, to get there first before they can get there, so I think that maybe shows the increase, so. But they're always there to assist and take over, and then we get out of there as soon as we can, so.
Okay. It was just one of the concerns, I know for years, everyone's always talked about the amount of patrols that the county has on Western Stearns, and to see a mutual aid thing increase, I always was wondering if that was something we should look at.
No.
Not saying that we shouldn't respond, but.
Yep. No, I actually think it's gotten a lot better with them helping us out here in this West End too. I'm seeing more officers or deputies out in this end, and I've noticed that they help us quite a bit too, so.
Okay.
It's been working pretty good hand in hand.
All right. Thank you. One other question.
Yep.
On the controlled substance charges, now is that, on the graph, it says controlled substance two, three, and five?
Yeah, second degree and third degree.
That's the degrees?
Yep.
Okay, that isn't what type of drug it is?
No.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Okay. Anyone else have anything else? Okay, thank you, Ryan.
All right, thank you.
Next up, planning commission report.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. In your packet, you have the planning commission report from our meeting that we had on March 18th. We did hold two public hearings that evening, and we will be, you will be taking action items on those just a little later in the agenda. And you had the January and February building permit reports in your packet.
Anyone have any questions? Diane, you serve on the planning commission, you have anything to add, or want to point out?
I know that St. Paul's has asked for five variances, and we approved it at the planning commission, and same with Centric here too.
Okay.
And that'll be coming up under the action items, just a little later, yep.
Anything else, questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Park board report.
Before I say anything else, go Streeters, the girls won tonight, I don't know if anybody, I'm sure everybody probably heard, but, so they'll play again Friday at 6:00, so I expect Friday afternoon to be pretty quiet around town, because I think a lot of people are going down to the game. So, on to city business, the first item is the park board report. The park board met in regular session on Tuesday, March 3rd. Some highlights of their meetings where they are working through the Department of Health requirements for the splash pad, and actually yesterday I received the final draft plans after they had been reviewed, so it looks like that's going to go through now. So we'll have our Department of Health permit probably within two weeks, so we'll be good to go on that. We are looking at alternatives for replacement of the dock at the public landing, and that'll come back to the park board at their April meeting, and I think Matt is going to, he's looking for additional funding for it, so he's going to leave us here in a little bit for another meeting, he has to attend on that. They're looking at upgrades to the campground properties that we do every spring, and we're always talking about water and electric and all those kinds of things at the campground, and seeing how it came through the winter, and also looking at the arena drive floor rentals, and we continue to see an increase in those, so that's a very good sign. There is no action from the park board at tonight's meeting. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions?
Yep.
None?
Okay.
Then we'll move on to CVB.
The CVB director provided me with this annual report, but she was unable to come, and generally she'll come and give you some of the highlights, but I did provide you those. She has her 2014 achievements, and kind of some statistical information, but I did want to point out some of their new promotions for 2015. They're going to be working on a mid-Minnesota meltdown next February, which will be kind of a winter festival, and they're looking to have a GeoCash trail set up, and GeoCashing is becoming very popular, and so they're going to be working on setting something like that up, and then they're going to get some walking trail maps done to go see some of the historical features of town. So that's kind of their new promotions, they're going to be starting in 2015. And then they did list on there all the 2014 extras, some of the things that they have done, and monies that they've received, trade shows they've attended, but I don't have any more detail than what she has here in the presentation. If you have any questions on them individually, I may be able to answer them.
Any questions?
No.
I just have one comment, I know when it started in 2007, there was a lot of people wondering if this is anything that was going to happen, or you know, be good for the community, and considering they started out with like $19,000, a little over $19,000 in 2007, and it's up to $48,000, that means that it's definitely working, and it's bringing people to town, so it looks like it was a good venture that the city took at the time, and we're headed in the right direction, so. Anyone else? Okay, then with that, we will move on to operations.
The operations committee met on Tuesday, March 17th at 3:00 PM, and the operations committee this year consists of Diane and Keith. So the issues that were on their agenda, they reviewed, and a lot of these were at previous city council meetings, but we kind of pulled it all back together, brought Diane up to speed on that. They discussed the police impound fencing, an area for that. They reviewed the stormwater pond maintenance, and we should have that testing back soon, so that we can get moving forward on that. Looking at the dog kennel impound updates, they met with the ambulance department regarding the 2015 ambulance purchase, that's an action item later on the agenda for those bids. They looked at the alley entrance exit onto Fifth Street behind Main Street Realty, if you recall, that was something the council discussed earlier. Looking at solutions for the wall leak, or the ceiling leak in the PD, which comes through the wall outside my office, and they're going to be recommending a repair for that. And we did discuss the HVAC issues, if you've known how cold this room has been this winter, and then all some of the air circulation issues we're having with odors from the diesel from the fire department, and finding out what the solution to that would be. And we're beginning a phone system review. The phone system is quite old, parts of it came from the old city hall, and we know in the upcoming years, it's going to be something that we're going to need to look at, because it's no longer supported, and we have been able to find some parts on eBay, so, we're going to keep it working as long as we can. So the only action item I have will be formally soliciting the bids for the ambulance, which is action item 7E.
Committee members got anything you want to add, or just, she got covered the points?
Yeah, she pretty much covered it. Did a good job.
Here's a plan out there.
Okay, policy committee report.
The policy committee met on Monday, March 16th. The policy committee this year includes Dave Thomas and Heidi Leach. They had just three main items on their agenda, because we had representatives from TRICAP came up from Wake Park, and that is regarding the transit garage agreement that we had with TRICAP and MINDOT. If you recall, that item came up earlier in the year with a grant they got from MINDOT that was passed through, and some of the strings that came with it, that we're trying to resolve. And I think we have some recommended solutions, we'll see how those go in the next couple weeks, and that will come back to the counsel, probably not till July, because their board won't meet on it till June, but it's just how do we resolve it, and what is the best solution to take care of that. We've had some ongoing discussion on the sidewalk snow removal, if you recall, that was something the council had discussed earlier, and the policy committee will be tackling that. And then also, we reviewed the proposal that's on the agenda for the cell phone reimbursement policy for employees' city use of personal phones reimbursement, I guess that's what it would be. So, does anybody have any questions? That would be the only action item we have on the policy committee.
Questions? Okay.
Good.
Thank you. Moving on to action items, 7A, approved resolution 2015-19, approving variances for St. Paul's Church.
In your packet, you have a copy of the variance request from St. Paul's Lutheran Church. We did hold a public hearing at our last planning commission meeting on March 10th, and at that meeting, I had no comments that I received either for or against these variances for St. Paul's Church. And at that planning commission meeting, the variances were granted with, we did have some conditions. Some of the conditions were that the city engineer shall approve the appropriate stormwater mitigation, the rate control of runoff, and infiltration plan for the proposed project, and any lighting shall be directed away from any residences, and screening shall be placed in parking lots along abutting residences. And those were the three conditions that were given by the planning commission.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I just got a few comments looking at the plan. I don't have an issue with the variances, there's just a few things that I looked at. It states in here that they plan on putting mesh fencing up along the property lines, and to put a fence up in an R1 district, you need to stay three feet off the property line. So what I was wondering is if that was going to cause a problem, or that's going to end up being another variance.
Yeah, and I don't know if Mark, if the engineer would like to address some of those questions for you?
Yep, that'd be fine.
Hi, I'm Mark Lonberg, I'm the architect, I represent the engineering and the architecture team for St. Paul's. We could probably go to three feet on that line, the driveway that comes along the north end of the addition, if you look at the site plan that's in there, is 12 feet wide right now, we'd have to probably squeeze it down to 11 feet wide, and it could still work, I talked to the civil engineer, but it starts getting a little tight for people to drive on, so, if we had to have three feet.
That was one of the concerns that I had, that you have an existing plan there, but then all of a sudden this three-foot condition comes into play, and it kind of takes away with what your ideas of what are going to happen.
Yeah.
And I wasn't sure how you planned on working there, if you were aware of it.
Yeah, we were aware of it, so that's, the fence we were going to put on there wasn't going to be like a mesh fence, I think it's going to be like a solid screen fence.
All right.
Probably one of those plastic or Trex-type fences that are solid.
But that would be something that we can work with later.
Yeah, so it's, we would have to squeeze probably a foot out of the driveway in order to stay three feet back from the property line to the fence.
Okay. Because I know the reason why the city had done that is because of maintenance for the opposite side.
Yes.
You have to have enough room to maintain the opposite side of the fence without, that are really trespassing on someone's lot.
Yeah.
So, that was one question I had. I seen that you bought the corner lot on, down in the northwest part?
Yep, St. Paul's, just that lot.
And you're planning on having that as a holding pond for water?
Yeah, it's, there's not going to be standing water in it, our engineers tell us it's just going to be like a retention basin, so there'll only be water in it when there's heavy rains or a storm, and then the water would infiltrate into the ground. Most of the time, there wouldn't be any water, it'd just be grass in that basin. And the basin is designed to accommodate all of the whole block eventually, it's St. Paul's master plan, so, right now, we're just developing kind of the west side of the church and the parking lot in the new addition, all of the water off that parking lot and off of the new addition, and kind of the west side of the church will all be drained with a pipe, and catch basins to that retention basin. And then in the future, if there's future development that happens, parking lots and the other land on the, kind of the east side of the church and the south, and the north, will all be going to that pond also.
Okay.
So it'll, everything that's within the block will be going to that pond eventually. You shouldn't call it a pond, it's a.
You're planning on having catch basins in the new parking lot?
Yes, so.
Catch it?
Yep.
And then take it around those two private lots yet?
Correct. Yep, it's going to go down the center of the block over to that northwest corner.
That was one of my concerns, whether or not all that water from the new parking lot was going to run across those two private backyards and create a problem there.
No, it's all getting caught before it goes on, none of it will go over onto the neighboring lots.
Okay, sounds good. And this might be a silly question, but anytime there's a driveway from one street going to another street, people use it as a shortcut.
Mm-hmm.
Either it's a church parking lot, or, we see it all the time up by the credit union here, you know, is there, and it's something that maybe if it happens, you have to take care of it later, maybe putting a speed bump in or something, but I was just wondering if it was ever discussed?
It's going to be kind of tough, because they're going to have to sneak through the parking lot, and I don't think, and then there's nothing kind of on the east side except the school over there, and a couple of houses down there.
Right.
I don't think there would be a lot of need for people to drive through the middle of the block that weren't at the church, for church business.
Because I know there's a bus unloading zone between the church and the school, and that's usually blocked off, and if you got another access coming from the west into that parking lot, that's one of them safety concerns that I.
I can't speak for the school, but I imagine the school will probably block that off during school. I don't know what you think, Father.
They can't block off too much, because I got to get out.
Yeah. I know they block the street off during school hours, between this church and the school.
Right, yeah. No, that's.
If it does become a problem, are speed bumps the logical answer?
That's one of the things we'd have to see if it happens. That's one of the things we'd have to see if it happens, but it was just one of them things that I was thinking ahead.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a straight shot out of that driveway out onto Pine Street, I think it is. They have to kind of wind through the parking lot, so I don't, it would be too much of a pain.
It's human nature to cut corners.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? I think I've got mine answered.
I'm fine.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Get back on my ready page here. So with that, if we don't have any other discussion or questions, do I have a motion to approve resolution 2015-19 granting the variances to St. Paul's Church with the three conditions that the planning commission laid out?
I'll second.
Okay.
Can I, clarification?
Sure.
We're at the three-foot setback?
Yeah, that would-
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that is, we got that clear.
Okay.
Okay, three-foot setback, got it.
All right. We have a motion from Keith, seconded by Diane. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against.
Thank you.
7B, approve ordinance 756 amending zoning map, Centricare.
Yes, and in your packet, you have a copy of that, and at that same meeting, we had a second public hearing for Centricare. This is a single parcel lot. It is currently zoned R1. It is on the corner directly across the street from the hospital clinic campus is how I refer to that area. They applied for the application. We only received one email that had some negative concerns and did not want this rezoned, and that was the only correspondence or contact that I had with any concerns about this application. Other than that, I didn't have any other, anyone else contact me for or against this rezoning on the zoning map. And have you got any questions of me?
Was that one email that you got, was that read into the record at the public hearing then?
Yes, it was.
It was?
Yes, it was.
Anybody have any questions, concerns? Hearing any, then I will ask for a motion to approve ordinance 756 approving the amendment to the zoning map.
So moved.
There's a motion by Heidi, second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other discussion or questions? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, 7C, approve boards and commissions appointments.
You do have in your packet the request for nomination consideration for two people that want to serve for the City of Sock Center. The one is the HRA board, and that would be Diane Lykum. She's looking to be appointed for a five-year term, and she's currently on the HRA board, which expires March 31st, and she wishes to serve for another five years. The second appointment is for the vacant planning commission position, and Kenneth Gieske has stepped up and said he would agree to serve that, or to fulfill that term, and it is effective from January 1st, 15, to December 31st, 2017. That is a three-year term. So that is the two appointments before you tonight. The appointment of Diane Lykum to the HRA board and Kenneth Gieske to the planning commission.
Do you have any questions, comments? I think we can take these both in one motion.
Sure.
If that's okay with the council?
Yep.
Do I have a motion to appoint Diane Lykum to the HRA board and Kenneth Gieske to the planning commission?
So moved.
You have a motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Diane. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. 7D, approve sale of tax forfeit property.
Sterns County Board has approved the sale of tax forfeit property in Sock Center. The property is at 414 Sixth Street South. This is a vocational biographies building. It was previously offered at $35,000. If you recall, you approved this at one time prior, and now they are reducing the starting bid actually to $10,000. So what they're asking the city council to do again is to approve the classification property as non-conservation lands and approve the sale, or the offering of sale of the property.
Questions, comments? This property is the one, the old vocational biographies property, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, with no discussion or questions, I'll ask the council to approve classification of property as non-conservation lands and also approve the sale of the property. Do I have that motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Dave?
Second.
Second by Diane. Any other discussion? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approve cellphone reimbursement policy.
The policy committee did meet and discuss the cellphone reimbursement at its meeting on March 16th. The proposal is for the city to reimburse an employee for his or her use of his or her personal cellphone rather than supply that employee with the phone when a cellphone is necessary for that employee to conduct business. So the couple of things that we'd written down, and then we talked about at the policy committee, was for the purpose of this policy, only employees that would otherwise be provided with a cellphone are eligible, and that would be like supervisory employees. That the employees must maintain the type of cellphone coverage that is reasonably related to our needs or the city's needs, i.e. similar to what the city would otherwise provide. I had a blank in there, and I think we agreed that we were going to set like a minimum dollar amount, or like the reimbursement cannot exceed like 80% of what it would cost the city to provide the phone service, that it cannot exceed what the employee would pay for the service, and that they would have to submit a copy of their cell bill every six months for verification. Now, we would give them a monthly reimbursement based on that, and then, because cellphone contracts go for a while, but we don't want to reimburse somebody $40 if they're only paying 20. You know, they don't want to make money on us. And the reimbursement will not be considered wages or be subject to income or payroll tax, and will not be a substitute for wages. This is language out of the IRS circular. And that it should be set to ensure that when you use a cellphone for reading or sending email, that it doesn't cause the deletion of the email from the server, because there's a click button you can have on your phone, so it won't cause it to come off the server. You can still open it up from your city computer. And I know some phones, they set that way, and some have the option, and we'd make sure that that's not set. So what we're looking for tonight is for the city council to approve the development or the adoption of a cellphone reimbursement policy. And what we had talked about was at a rate of $40 a month, and it would be available to those that otherwise have a cellphone or a city cellphone for the conduct of their business. Right now, the police chief has a city cellphone. We were looking at the public works supervisor would have a cellphone, the ambulance director has one. Of course, we have them in the three ambulances and the two squads. They're, they belong to the vehicles. Currently, the assistant ambulance director and the fire chief and myself just use our own phones for, and we take city calls on it. But currently, we're only looking at one employee that's actually requesting the cellphone reimbursement, and that would be the new public works supervisor. We have not yet provided with him with a phone, waiting to determine whether we would want to adopt this policy.
Okay, questions?
I guess it, just kind of, I'm wondering if it's, if we, is it, the thought is to eventually include all city staff on this, if they wanted to, or?
We don't require, or we do not provide cellphones to all the city staff, only like supervisory staff or staff that need the cellphones for the conduct of their business.
Yeah, but you just stated that you use your personal-
We do have, and I think you use a personal phone, and then also, the fire chief has another cellphone that he uses, that we, we actually do conduct some city business on our cellphones and check our emails and that type of thing. And so actually, the three would be eligible, the three of us would be eligible to request that reimbursement, if we chose to.
It was our intention that reimbursement would be available to those people who would be required to have a cellphone for their job.
That's, I was going to say, that, this is not just for this one case.
Right.
Correct.
Just for clarification.
Right, those who would be required to have a city cellphone but would rather use their personal cellphone, then we can have reimbursement instead.
It's also their prerogative.
If they request. If they request reimbursement instead.
So they're not being forced into requesting reimbursement either, then that would be their choice, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Everything's understood, or do we need a waiver for that then, or not necessarily? I don't know.
We, the policy will have, before you enter into that, there would be a sign-off that they understand the rules that pertain to it, and they agree to it, and that the city can terminate it if the rules are not abided by.
Okay, thank you. One question I got, is I think the city's got a policy on electronic devices?
We do.
Okay, is this going to fall underneath that?
It will probably eventually be incorporated into the technology policy.
Okay.
You know, it'll probably stand alone for now, and when we update the technology policy, we'll pull it in.
Okay. I think that's one of the things that we need to do is update that technology one, because everything's changing all the time. I think it's been probably three years since it's been looked at.
Probably.
So, it's one of the things I think we need to take a peek at. With that, we have any other discussion or questions? If not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the cellphone reimbursement policy. So moved. We have a motion by Keith, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Approve resolution 2015-20 authorizing solicitation of bids for 2015 ambulance.
The ambulance department, as you know, in an effort to maintain the current schedule for vehicle replacement, is seeking approval to solicit quotes through the state bidding process for the proposed purchase of a new ambulance rig. The 2015 vehicle will replace the current 2,000 vehicle and will be the final step in converting the fleet to a nine-year rotation schedule. So every three years, a new ambulance, so that of the three, every nine years, that ambulance gets rotated out. The operations committee reviewed the proposal and the potential costs of two separate models and two separate styles. The cost to range from $135 to $155. That's when I put this packet together. Tim was at the policy committee meeting, and he does have very good quotes, but we do, because we are over $100,000, we do need to go through the solicitation of formal quotes to comply with state regulation. And so what we're asking tonight is seeking formal solicitation of quotes through the state bid process for the replacement of the ambulance with a 2015, or maybe 2016, if we don't hurry up, because Tim tells us they're about nine months out. And so what we're looking for tonight is to approve resolution 2015-20 authorizing us to do that, and then it'll come back at the next meeting. And that way, we'll have formal quotes, and he'll be able to ask specific questions about it, but he's here right here. If you have questions about the type of ambulance or what, what your expectation is, that we'll come back to you with.
Questions?
I'll ask the question, and it says two separate ambulance styles. What are you looking at?
Come on up there, please.
For the last, about a dozen years, we were going with either PSV out of Fergus Falls or Lifeline out of Monticello. It's not really different types of ambulance. We're still looking at a type three ambulance.
All right, all right, that's enough for me, yeah, different vendors. Well, it's an ambulance style, and I thought, what are you going for?
I just wanted to get a kind of a rough ballpark figure before we went to the operations committee, so that's why I requested quotes from PSV and Lifeline.
They also looked at gas and diesel, too, but-
That's chassis-type stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, action requested is to approve resolution 2015-20 seeking formal bids through the state bidding process for the purchase of a 2015 ambulance.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Dave. Any other discussion? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Moving on, unfinished business, rental of bus garage stalls.
I have this on here because it's ongoing. We talked about renting out two stalls at the transit garage to TRICAP, but now with our ongoing discussion with resolving the MinDOT TRICAP grant, we've kind of put this on hold. TRICAP's going to talk about it at their same board meeting when we talk about the grant, so this is just kind of a carry forward. There's no action requested, and I really don't have anything else to add for that right now.
Okay, squeeze your vote out of there, man.
Want to vote to continue it, is that what you were going to say? Sure.
Okay, we don't have any new business. That moves us into our consent agenda. First of all, we have a schedule of claims, unpaid claims of $62,816.55 for that same total, February checks of $1,8463.40. We have resolution 2015-21 accepting contributions of $230.10 from the men's card playing group to be given to the senior center, and $25 from Robert and Jeanette Stansbury, also for the senior center. And with this, I'd like to acknowledge the contributions on behalf of the city and thank the men's card playing group and Robert and Jeanette Stansbury. We have a gambling application for exempt permit request from St. Paul Catholic United Financial, number 108, for a raffle on September 20th, 2015, at Holy Family School Cafeteria. We also have a gambling application for exempt permit request from Knights of Columbus, number 4863, for a raffle and bingo on July 29th through August 2nd, 2015, at Sterns County Fairgrounds. And we also approve resolution 2015-18 declaring property as excess and authorizing sale of the 2003 Cadillac Escalade. Is there anything else?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
So moved.
We have a motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Diane, is there any discussion or questions about anything in the consent agenda?
I just, one question on that, on the Escalade. You spoke with the chief, and he felt they didn't need-
One of the things about the Cadillac Escalade would be the ongoing repair and maintenance costs, and also the conversion of equipment.
Oh, mm-hmm. Okay, sure, go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, I just want to say, appreciate the confidence to get a fourth squad, or, I mean, as much as I'd really like to do that, this particular vehicle probably would not be the vehicle to do that with, trying to get equipment in that type of vehicle. Like I say, the upkeep for that type of vehicle would be pretty expensive, I think, so appreciate it though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Keith, do you have a motion and a second? Call the question. All those in, what's that?
Yeah, I'll make the motion if you need one.
Oh, we already got one.
Oh, okay, good. That's right.
Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Moving on to 11 informational items. Ricky?
Just a couple of things for your packet, that we did receive the 2015 final tax capacity rates from Sterns County. It's all the city's township, schools, and everything, all on one page, so you can kind of look at, the first bunch is the rate for Sterns County, and that applies to all cities. Then you pick out your city and your school, and you can add them up, and you can see how we compare to other cities in our area. So you can see that we're faring very well. So between the city's low rate and actually the Sock Center schools' low rate in comparison to others, we really are finding that you can own a home or a business in Sock Center and pay less property taxes than a great deal of the other communities in Sterns County. So that's, bodes well for us. The other thing I have in the packet is the 2015 safety loss control workshops. These workshops are put on by the league every year, typically something that several of our staff attend, but they're certainly open to any of the city council. It's kind of an all-day session, and you can go to different tracks of things that might interest you. If anybody has an interest in attending any of those, and the dates are on the first page and the cities that they're in, just let me know, and we can get you signed up[1785.83] page and the cities that they're in, just let me know, and we can get you signed up for that. And the final thing on there is, this is our annual bridge inspection, this is the bridge on Hoboken Creek on Hickman Drive. This year, we did have one deficiency that we'll have to repair, some undermining of riprap, which is kind of minor. So generally, we get a good grade on that bridge, but sometimes these things happen, so we'll get that taken care of, and hopefully in 2015, we won't have that return again, so. Anybody have any questions?
I just, you, on the workshop, you do have some city staff going to that?
Generally, two or three of us will go.
Okay, but-
So we kind of cover our respective areas.
Yeah, because it looks like it's got some pretty good stuff on it.
Yeah, they do. And they have very good expertise there. And they bring all their attorneys and their HR people and everything, and they travel the state, and they, they do this, it's a, like you said, it's loss control, it's trying to set the city up for a good position in, you know, all different areas.
Anyone else have any questions? I've got one, on that bridge inspection, is that riprap just on the outside edge, basically, what they're looking at?
Yeah, it just started, on the east side of the bridge, it just started undermining, they took a picture of it, you can kind of see the riprap is up here, and then you can see underneath, like maybe a critter or something got under there, and so we'll have to fill that.
Because I know I go over that thing probably four, five times a day, and there, that one part of it is starting to settle to the point where we were talking speed bumps before, it's getting bad, I don't know why they-
It does, quite often in the spring, it moves quite a bit. Optimally, what we would love to do is take that out and put an oval culvert in there, a solid one. Right now, it's got like a couple side by side, so all the debris catches on it. And then we have problems with backup and having to clean out the debris, and then it chips away at the bridge. So, I can see sometime in our future that that'll have to come out with some other kind of bridge, or a, one of those big square culverts, or a oval culvert or something, so that we don't have it divided down the middle.
What kind of hoops and hurdles we got to go through to get that done?
Nothing is impossible.
Was it, was that, that was MinDOT this afternoon trying another experiment or two on 71, or?
They were doing their patching, yeah, that was their, where they used the machine and they spray it on, and they went to several different parts, and it's their pothole filling.
Okay.
They use that, we use a shovel.
Okay, anything else, questions? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion from Dave, second?
I'll second that.
Second from Keith. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?